Welcome, everybody. I'm Art Whitman, Chairman of the Shasberry Select Board, calling this meeting to order at 6:30 on August 2nd, 2021. First order of business, is there any conflict of interest for anybody on the board with the showed agenda?
No.
We have some minutes. Did everybody receive minutes for 6:30?
Yes.
Entertaining motion to accept them is presented.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Tony, second by Ken. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, 5-0-0. Can we sign? Do you have one for me to sign?
I'll put it tomorrow morning to sign.
Got it. And we also have him for 7:19.
So moved.
So moved by Mike.
Second.
Second by Joe. By Tony. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried, 5-0-0. Is this warrant number three? And this is...
It's the top of that thing.
Yep. Thirty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars.
So moved.
So moved by Tony. Second. Second by Mike. A and K Agribusiness, eleven hundred dollars for trucking of gravel. Business Card Services, thirteen hundred dollars.
That's got a whole list of things from stamped envelopes in the post office to our Staples purchases, WB Mason purchases, express copy for the water department, for saying to send out the water quality statements. That's about it. Most of it is, and of course for Zoom, which we pay fifty-eight dollars a month and a half.
I've got Delory's sales service for sixteen hundred dollars.
That was for the fire department, for fire truck services.
Uh, booth frame group, fourteen hundred dollars.
That's the engineers for the water line.
Water system. Northeast Municipal LLC.
That's with traffic homes and a Honda engine. I'm not sure what the Honda engine is for, Mike. Gas driver, four-stroke, top handle Honda engine.
That's a signpost. Yeah.
Oh, rentals and sun?
All that is, there's a few rentals there, that's all air packs from the new air pack reserve fund.
Yep, several in here. Safe Road Services, thirty-four hundred dollars.
That is the new material for the, we're experimenting to see if it can replace the chloride.
Yep. And we've got landscaping, Sycamore Landscaping Cemetery, this is just a, is it a monthly payment?
Monthly payments.
We were excavating, is that for the storm damage, seventeen hundred dollars?
That was for the night of the storm, they actually worked on our roads, we hired them to help work on the roads, it wasn't part of the whole project.
Oh, that's right.
Day after.
Yes.
Day after, yeah.
Yeah. Wholesale distributors, twelve hundred dollars. Another one for thirty-nine hundred for wholesale distributors. That's it. We have a motion, any discussion?
Overruled.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, 5-0-0. And we have a payroll warrant. Number two. Twenty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty cents.
So moved.
So moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, 5-0-0. And I think I've read, why is there, is there a different number?
Oh, all right, the number on the bottom left is the number that you're actually voting on.
Okay, so I want to, I'm going to change that, instead of twenty-three thousand, it's twenty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents. Is that agreed?
Yeah.
If you're interested, the difference is always the water money going to the water department. And so that creates a due-to, due-for, that's why the numbers always slightly disagree.
So the water guy gets his payroll and everything else?
It's part of that, and so, because there's some balancing funds that you have to see the cross over at the bottom, so, so that's why it's always like...
I'll look on the bottom from now on.
Yeah, yeah.
You're up to announcements, does anybody have any announcements? I think it's important that we make the public aware that things are changing at the dump. As of Sunday, we officially took over complete, I don't know, control. We've always owned it, but now we are, there's nothing to do with Casella or TAM at the dump. The two employees that are there are employees of Shasberry, they are in charge. Things are, we're going to change some things around, make it easier for people to dump things in, platforms and all that sort of stuff. It's going to take time, I realize that, I just want everybody to be patient, but we are open for suggestions, okay, because we now have control of this. And so, if anybody has any suggestions, both Dave's email and telephone number on the website, my email is on the website also, so. We want some input because this is your, this is your dump and should be convenient for you and that sort of stuff. Again, we're having to charge more, and we're going to kind of change the traffic pattern and things like that, but it's going to be difficult, just want to make everybody aware of that. Anybody else have any comments? Announcements? Public comments? Anybody on Zoom?
No.
Nobody here? Melanie, treasures report.
Okay, it's my favorite day. The Listers did manful service and we have a tax rate I'd like to vote on tonight, if you can bring that up.
It's loose flow.
Nope. Okay. It's, the good news is it's going up hardly at all versus last year. Last year we were, the total municipal rate was point four-four-nine-six, and what I'm recommending you vote in favor of is point four-five-six-one. And the education rates have, we really held the line on them, actually the homestead rate within most of Shasberry is actually going down a tiny bit. The other three, the non-homestead and the independent district are going up very, very slightly, but most people's tax bills will be remarkably similar to last year. So what I'm recommending is that you vote in favor of that point four-five-six-one, which includes two thousand dollars for possible abatements, we have the exemption for the Grange Hall and the Community Hall are still in there, those are voter-approved, so that the, the total municipal rate includes that local agreement, which is the veterans and the exemptions, and the possible abatements. So the total for the municipal tax rate is point four-five-six-one, if you approve it.
So moved by here, motion.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Ken, second by Mike. Discussion? Concerns?
Looks good.
Looks good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried, 5-0-0.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we take a look at the cash flow real quick? Not a huge amount going on. Okay, yeah, got some more eager beavers out there paying their taxes, I got another, another big check today, they cannot wait for the bills.
That's without the tax rate in?
Yes. I've been fighting them off with sticks, but some of them get under my guard and they still throw money at me, so that's, there's another, over six thousand dollars came in today, but anyway, so you see that the highway state aid came in, MERC has been still collecting, I actually deposited another check from MERC today. So the, the bottom line, if you look down, is that we still got, I think we're not, we are, I can officially say unless, I don't want, I don't want to talk about the weather, so, actually, I'm not going to officially say it, it looks like we will not need a line of credit this year.
Okay.
If you want to look down to the bottom, you, it's, you can't really look at the versus budget yet because it's too early, but as you can see, we're on, we're on track, the expenditures are going up, it's rounding here, a little bit faster than this same time last year, but that's just timing. And a lot of those expenditures are actually the previous fiscal year, and when the auditors come, they'll do their magic and send some of those back, so I'm not at all concerned about it, that's completely normal. Want to take a look at the, oh, does anybody have any questions about any of that? Okay, so we can take a look at the reserve funds. The main thing that happened in July was, see that great big hundred and ten thousand dollars, that was a grant from the state, we put it in equipment, remind me what that was for, Dave?
That is the treasurer's, state treasurer's loan, we have a hundred and ten thousand dollars to buy the mower.
Right.
Which we're opening the bid for in a few minutes.
Okay, right, yes, so that's a loan, that's just parked there for now, but, so that'll probably disappear again, but the rest, the only other activity in July was water payments coming in, still coming in. Any questions about any of that? Okay, I am going to move heaven and earth to get those tax bills out just as soon as I possibly can, and I think Dave's going to get me a folder, which I'm very excited about because that's going to make...
A new folder?
A paper folder, kind of, yeah.
Oh, a folder.
To fold, sorry, a folding machine.
Oh, a folder.
A folding machine.
Otherwise you're doing, goes across this line and then over.
She's been asking for a folder, by the way.
Well, yeah, so that's, that's probably going to make the whole process go more smoothly and have it for...
You get that, you'll have to go to the gym.
Yes.
Oh, you deserve it.
Yeah, well, we're going to share it with Marley, so I'm very excited about it.
Great.
So, that's it for me.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Now we're going to talk about something that someone just didn't understand very much of, but we're going to buy a new server. Bob?
Yes, you are. So, last week, Dave, Tim and I met to review the new server proposal that we're suggesting for the, for the town. We installed a server, turns out it was ten days ago, and the thing's been running ever since and not been a problem, but the issue, the issue is that it's running a version of the operating system that's no longer supported by Microsoft, so it's no longer being patched, and as a result, it's, there are some vulnerabilities there that could be exploited, and if they were, there's a real, very real possibility that someone could gain access to it, gain access to the information that's on that server, and it could also result in some downtime that would be disruptive or short, and the town would be pulling his hair out.
Yeah, if that comes to a halt if the server goes down.
So what we did was, we put together a couple of quotes, or obtained a couple of quotes, I could say, on behalf of the town for two different servers, and they're listed on the left-hand side as an ML-110 server, and on the right-hand side as an ML-350. Basically, the difference between the two is, is that the ML-110 is considered to be an entry-level workgroup server, so it's really designed for just a few users able to run some applications, if you need to run applications and file storage and that kind of stuff. The server on the right-hand side, the ML-350 is, is a, it's also considered an entry-level server, but it has far more capability in terms of expansion capabilities down the road if we ever needed it, it's got some heftier hardware in it and so forth, so we took a look at the difference in prices, and it turns out it was, the difference in pricing was a lot less expensive than what I expected, it only, it ends up being about a thousand dollars, and for a thousand dollars, from my perspective, there's no question it should be the girl, the better of the two. We've also included a, the last two line items are a new firewall with a Wi-Fi built into it, and one of the reasons why we're doing that is because the one that you've got is, again, several years old, this one gives us far more flexibility in terms of configuration, and it has better security capabilities built in, so it's time to look at replacing that as well. So basically, what it boils down to is you're looking at either ninety-three hundred or ten thousand, three hundred for the two, and I get it from my perspective, I think the...
Both of them, both of them as user-friendly. But they don't know, they don't even want to turn a computer on.
We'll try and make it as user-friendly as possible. I guess a couple of things that I do want to mention is that, in either case, both of the servers have been built out with support services included, not included, you're going to have to pay for it, but we've added the support services for a three-year period, that those support services include twenty-four dollars, seven-day week, four dollars response, so again, if we've got a failure, a hardware failure at the certain level, or the firewall level, the hardware replacement hardware would be in-house within four hours after we get done with the problems. If you don't do that, and you go with what, within the next level of service, there's a very real possibility that you could be looking at twenty-four to forty-eight hours of downtime. So again, we typically build those into all of our servers, servers that are critical for operations.
Tim, I want to thank you for working with this, you probably recommend the ML-350.
Yeah, yeah, I asked Rob to look at, you know, a little bit stronger piece of hardware, and it ended up not being very expensive at all because so much of this is in the warranties and the support services and the accessories, so I definitely think for that little bit, get the beefier hardware, and I believe, Rob, the way you first characterized it was the stronger, the more expensive hardware is actual server hardware, where the less expensive one is more or less a beefed-up PC.
That's far way worse out there. Again, the ML-350 is considered to be an entry-level server, but at a slightly different level from the ML-110, the ML-110, as Tim just mentioned, is basically just a beefed-up PC. Still, still good, we've gotten a number of those in prices, and they've, they've been rock solid, but again, for the difference of price these days, but what it boils down to is, is the difference of price is in the, in the hard drives, so line items, let's see, one, two, three, four, I guess line items four and five on both of them, the, the ML-350 uses a two-and-a-half inch drive as opposed to the ML-110 using a three-and-a-half inch drive, but the pricing on the drives dropped pretty significantly on that smaller of the two drives, the two fifty-sized drives, so, but it ended up, like I said, being priced down pretty significantly, so it makes sense to go that way.
And Rob promised that it'll, it'll last ten years just how...
The case will.
Entertaining motion, somebody want to decide?
I would make a motion to accept the ML-350 package for roughly ten thousand, three hundred dollars.
Can you read that? We probably already do it.
Ten thousand, two hundred and eighty-six, sixty-seven.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Mike, second by Ken. Any further discussion?
We can't get it for the Generation Ten price.
I was thinking it was something that could be in place for, you don't want to find out two years from now that you could have had the flexibility, you know, and didn't, you know, for a thousand dollars, you didn't have, then you're suddenly having to buy another piece of equipment.
Yeah. I think just before you vote, because this was not anticipated in the budget, so what I'm proposing to, the way to pay for this, is we had a large capital gains in the Hawkins Fund this year.
The Hawkins Fund is, we're allowed to invest.
We said at the discretion of the Select Board, the fund itself made over thirty thousand dollars this year, so I would suggest to the board that we, when the invoice is ready, that we request the board trustees, the total of the invoice to be paid through the Hawkins Fund. This is one of those things, you know, we only anticipate and we cannot delay because it's way too vulnerable.
So we aren't voting on that, we're just, I want you to be aware.
Yeah, I just want to know, be aware of where the money's coming from.
We are coming, okay?
Why do you suggest that system anyway? Is it just price or...
Well, these are, both of these are HP servers. Yeah, oh no, they are HP, HP brand, and what it boils down to is, these days you've got only a couple of different options in terms of servers at this level, and the HPs have been, again, rock solid, we've had really good luck with them, their support is, you know, you just can't beat it.
We've had good experience with them.
Yeah, yeah, within doing this for years, yeah. In fact, we run a number of servers at our office, and some are HPs, other are IBMs, but we had no problem with HP.
Sounds good.
Any other concerns or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, 5-0-0. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
For doing it.
Okay, next is the Bennington County Solid Waste Group.
Yeah, it's a long title, the Bennington County Solid Waste Alliance Hazardous Household Waste Facility Agreement. Throughout the county, we were required to have two hazardous household waste days, we used to have one here, we used to have it budgeted for twenty thousand dollars a year to run this thing. Through the countywide group now, we're building, and we've been approved for a loan from the state to build a permanent facility at the Bennington Transfer Station, that'll allow it to be open year-round so that people can bring their things whenever they want to, we'll still have to have one outreach because Woodford and part of, the northern part of the district are too far away, but that'll be much smaller things. So what this is just asking, the total loan is for a hundred and seven, the total cost is a hundred and seventeen thousand, and the match is forty-seven, six forty for each town. Shasberry's share of that, no, excuse me, I've just lost the number. Sorry. Figure, when you need it, you lose it. The Shasberry's share is twelve thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars, which all the costs from the BCSWA are decided by the population, and whatever we need to pay is divided by the population, so we're the fourth largest in the group, or third largest in the group, so, because of the high needs, as I say, Bennington pays a great deal of it. So what we need is for the board to approve this, and each board member to sign that we agree to enter into a loan as part of the BCSWA and build a hazardous waste transfer station at the Bennington facility.
And our share is twelve thousand?
Twelve thousand, eight hundred.
Twelve, maybe eight dollars. Is that just the building of it? How is it manned? How is...
Well, we manned, as another cost factor on our table, it's programmed into our annual payments we make from them, this is, this is just the extraordinary first expense of building it. But over time, it will save, because these things are getting more and more expensive to run, having it in one location with some storage there will make this a lot easier. Like I said, when, when I started eight years ago, we were doing them here, we had a budget of twenty thousand dollars just to cover the cost. Right now, they have big ones at MAU, every year, it's actually this one coming up, and this will just, like I said, make it easier because you don't have to wait every six months, you can just go down to this.
This brings up to...
Yeah.
One motion, right? So, so moved.
Yes, yes. Oh, if you have motion...
Is that, is that something new, Dave, or...
Yeah, this is, this is brand new, we've been talking about it for a while.
Is it in our budget anywhere?
Uh, no, this is, well, yeah, it's covered, I can cover it through the other budget, through our solid waste budget, yeah.
Okay.
So I have a motion from Tony, second by Mike, for entering into this agreement to be part of the loan that will build this hazardous waste facility.
So, any hazardous waste, or they'll have a...
Any hazardous waste we accept now will be accepted there. So that's nearly...
Anytime, any...
Well, we said hours, it won't be every day.
Yeah, oh, okay.
The hours is still to be determined, but it'll be much more convenient, the idea is that you won't have to wait six months to do it and be on a line with all these people, because I think that is a deterrent to some people doing it.
Yeah.
So, it's much better, but everybody, I think remembers the year it was first at the, one down here in Bennington, where they were backed up all the way to the side roads and it's kind of a mess, so, that's been improved a great deal, and I think this will make another big difference in it, hopefully keeps some things from winding up in the woods.
Yeah.
You know, it's the bottom line.
Yeah.
And that was first called, twelve thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight is our share.
That's good, Mr. Martin.
Any other discussion?
And how, how often would you accept hazardous waste?
Uh, that's it to be determined, but it would be on, on, you know, almost a weekly basis, is the idea is that, because they're manned, it's a, it's a Casella facility, but this will have its own attendant, who, because you have to be specially trained to do this, so the hours aren't completely set yet, but they, they will be once we, once we get it going.
But the goal is every week.
The goal is to have it open every week, not every day, but, and maybe not even every day they're open, but just having someone there on every Saturday would be a big help.
Okay, I'll say, so we have a motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, 5-0-0, and this we all sign this.
Yes, that needs everybody to...
Okay.
And this is covered through the solid waste budget, you said, Dave?
Yeah, we'll be able to cover this through the regular budget, which is being helped because we just raised the fees at the transfer station.
Earlier this summer, we cleaned the ditches on Grandview Street and some people were concerned about some things and so it brought up, prompted a public meeting whereby they kind of came out and talked about several things they were concerned about. There was no sidewalk on Grandview Street, no streetlights and so on and so forth. So we promised them that we would apply for what's called a scoping study, which is, which is still, would cost us some money, but the majority of it is a grant, is that right?
Right. We received a grant, we were notified Friday, we received a grant for thirty-two thousand dollars from the state to do the sidewalk scoping study for Grandview.
And Hawks.
And Hawks Street.
Which means, which means then an engineer comes in.
Yeah, this would be a whole project to, to test the feasibility and to give us a construction estimate of what it would cost to build this. And this includes sidewalks, drainage, crossing the state highway, it would link up to where North Bennington sidewalk ends. And of course, this project, because of Grandview, has a lot of drainage issues because of the steepness of that hill, so.
That's the biggest problem.
Yeah, the forty thousand, with our match, forty thousand, will be interesting to see what the outcome is.
So, but this is just a study, this doesn't get anything done.
This doesn't get anything built, this is just a preliminary study that tells us what needs to be done and will give us a realistic estimate of what it will cost to build it.
And our share is?
So we'll be paying eight thousand.
Eight thousand dollars, so it's going to cost us, tax, it's eight thousand dollars to hire this engineer who will get paid forty thousand dollars, but eight thousand is our share, so basically we're going to spend eight thousand dollars to look, at least take a look at what it would look like in the future.
Yeah. And that we can easily take out of the class three fund or any number of other funds, even the sidewalk fund. Because nothing will really happen with it, it's, what, August? Maybe the next summer we'll be looking at construction costs and then that, well, we'll see what that is and then we'll go from there.
And the construction costs could be considerable.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it will be considerable. The drainage alone, because we have to mix the drainage with it. And just from the experience in building the sidewalk just corner over here, it's going to be considerably expensive, I'm sure.
Could be, could be a million.
Yeah.
Is there a room?
Just want to warn you.
Well, that's another question, is there a room? Because when you go down Hawks.
Yeah.
You're definitely going, well, you know, everyone's grass is right to, yeah, everybody's is. And Grandview with, with the ditch, which you need to tunnel, turn all this water away, now you're talking about having a whole system of storm drains. So, yeah, it's, it's not an easy, it's not an easy place to do, actually.
Now, does this include, just a study or is it blueprints or?
It won't be construction grade, but they'll give a, a construction estimate. And then, you know, construction design will come when you actually contact out, so. But when you get those bills, there's also loans, like we used here, that will cover a certain percentage of the construction cost. But that's down the road, that's a long way off, but we'll see what that is when it comes out.
We need them in order to apply for that.
Yeah, you can't get a construction loan until you've scoped it out.
We kind of promised them that we would look into it, they wanted to, we talked to several engineers, V-Trans was there, said one idea that we had just wouldn't work. And so, we aren't engineers, so I think we owe it to them to at least look into it.
Yep.
And if it's going to be a lot of money, we can say, look at this, this just isn't possible. At least we have, lighting is going to be another thing that may be talked about at that time.
Yeah, there were a number of suggestions, lighting being one of them. I'm going to send an email to the core group that had been discussing it with us and suggesting that we hold off, like, the estimate to put in the lighting isn't much, but it might be jumping the gun. If they can design something where there are sidewalks and it's a manageable project, I think they might prefer not to have the streetlights. Because it's going to forever change the character and they're going to put these streetlights in.
That's right.
So I think, I think the best idea at this point is let them design the whole thing, let's see what it is, and let's see what's feasible after we get the different expense parts in.
We can always go back to the streetlights.
We can always go back to the streetlights. And, you know, maybe it's just one side of Grandview and one side of Hawks, they get the argument of who's losing the front lawn, but, you know, it's, it's worth looking at it, we said we would look at it and we got the money, so I think we move forward. But what we do need a vote on too is it has to appoint, the board has to appoint, the board has to appoint a responsible person in charge to follow this all the way through.
Wow.
So I think that would be made, basically. Because I'm already talking to them.
And you're responsible?
I was responsible.
Okay, so, do you want that part of the?
Yeah, that's been part of the motion, yeah. You have to say require a motion by the select board, who they're appointing to be in charge with.
And then want to take a stand at it?
I'll, I'll make the motion that we approve the study and appoint Dave as the point person.
Second. Is that sufficient, Dave?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion by Tony, a second by Ken. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carry five zero zero. You're up, Mike. Is there anything to report first before you get into the contracts?
Yeah, we can talk about the hollow a little bit.
Okay.
The last time we talked, it wasn't going so good. But the weather's changed a little bit for us, so it's gone a lot better. They, Craig ended up getting the culvert crew to come back and they worked all last, from last Saturday all the way until Thursday, they were here. They assembled the culvert on top and then hired a crane, well, and Weaver repaired the site and fixed the diversion and everything to maintain the water. Then they set the culvert in and they've been backfilling and they had to fill the inside of the culvert with three feet of material, which is state required. And now that that's done, Anar gave it his blessing, he liked it. So they turned the water over, there's no more diversion, the water is running through the new culvert and.
Temporary, temporary bridge is still being used.
Still being used and probably by Wednesday, you'll see the temporary bridge being removed and traffic on top so they can rebuild that section and restore all the ground. And the property owner that we use, Tony's, we use a lot of his graveyard and we got to restore all that. But Craig says the road will be open by the weekend and then next week will be a lot of cleanup, so should be done within the next two weeks.
Six years later.
Yeah.
Seven.
Seven years.
Seven.
Town crews, we're, now that the weather's letting us, we're back to grading and pretty much every road in town needs to be graded, so I have grader on both sides of the town right now and we'll be pugging away at that. And then when, then we got some culverts to replace, but we'll get to that, right now we got good grading weather, so we're going to focus on that for now.
Before we try to, before it gets too hard.
Yeah.
Did you get those culverts cleaned out on Blueberry Hill?
Yeah, they're cleaned out and functionable, but they still need work up there.
Yeah. Is there any place we could add another culvert or two on that hill?
Probably can. That hill, yeah, needs some work.
Yeah, because I'd like to prepare on that one and Leclerc Road.
Leclerc, Eric was on Leclerc today fixing that mess.
Yeah, but I mean, I'd like to add another culvert or two up on, up on that hill.
We can talk about that.
Can help you, I think.
I think I'd be better, better to look at that out in the field.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody got any questions about what's happened or anything? And are you ready to announce your contract awards?
Yeah. The West Mountain Project, which we added, we know it was there. That's, everything looks good. I'm fine with awarding that to Weaver and he said his schedule frame would be, if it was awarded project, he would be doing that in September.
Okay. Do you have, probably ought to be part of the motion, the total amount. Do you have that?
Twenty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine.
We'd like, the amount we've been allocated by the state is somewhat higher than that, so we would like to be able to negotiate with Weaver to add on a few more items to the area, just to bring enough to maximize the grant.
Being a total of thirty-three thousand with our match.
Yeah, so.
Do you ever send anything back?
Yeah, I don't want to send anything back, so it's not like we couldn't find a few more things to add in here.
Okay.
Within that facility, there's a few things that need to be done, so.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to approve the thirty-three thousand dollar grant to Weaver Construction.
Just the contract to Weaver, allowing us to negotiate for expanding the original requirements.
Yeah, up, up to that amount.
Up to that amount, yeah.
Okay. Second. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mike, a second by Tony, more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carry five zero zero.
The next one was the excavator. And I would like to go with the Caterpillar three oh seven five to replace the power mobile. It is quite a bit smaller machine, but I feel it's going to be a lot more user friendly and just one of the things is not taking up the whole road and moving out of the way for cars. We'll be able to maintain ditching on one side of the road and still have one lane traffic with this machine. Ours is very hard to do that with now.
We're getting a considerable amount of money, trade-in?
Yes. Do you want to know the numbers?
It's fifty-five thousand nine hundred for the trade.
Okay, that's probably all that's necessary.
Sixty-five for the trade.
Oh, sorry, wrong one, that trade is fifty-five million.
Fifty-five?
Yes.
Fifty-five thousand nine hundred is the total price we'll be paying.
That's what we'll be paying with the trade.
Okay.
What are we getting for the model?
Sixty-five thousand even.
I thought that's what it was.
The, I talked to Mike about this being a smaller machine, his comment was, well, all we're doing is digging up ditches where somebody's already created a ditch and culverts, which is just in roadway, it's not like we're going to go out in the middle of the field and start excavating huge quantities of dirt and rocks and all that sort of stuff, so.
For what the town will use the machine for, it's a, it's a good size.
You went to two different towns?
I went to the town of Fairhaven, utilized the machine for their water department and their highway department. And then I went to Wallingford and they just straight highway and, I mean, no really complaints. Good sized machine, reaches in the back of a tandem, no problem. Had good, the guy said it had great power. Visibility was nice.
Some people do a lot of work at the tiny ones.
Well, this one has a blade on it too and the blade will come in handy.
Is that an angle blade breaker though?
No angle blade. Just a regular straight blade.
Yeah.
So, and someone want to make a motion?
Just a further note on this, part of the agreement or the bid was, they did purchase and lease, so we're going to ask them, excuse me, to provide a five-year annual fund lease purchase payment to cover fifty-five thousand, it'll be eleven thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars a year, excuse me, for the next five years.
So what leasing is?
It's called purchase lease, we're buying it, they call it purchase lease. Excuse me. Yeah, and that's not going to be an issue because we've already worked that into the long-term capital plan.
So that, that's already in the budget?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
So go.
Okay, for CAT three oh seven five, right?
Yeah.
For fifty-five thousand nine hundred dollars.
Even.
Even trade-in. Okay, if they're willing to go.
Second.
I have a motion by Ken, second by Tony. Any discussion, any concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carry five zero zero.
Another thing with the excavator is we're going to need to purchase a trailer. I found a trailer local, it's a little bigger than we need, what we need, but the price is right and it's nice to have a little bit more weight capacity too.
Air brakes?
Air brakes.
Super.
Yeah, both tandems are set up for, with air brakes. And one single axle is, we're just missing the panel, but that's no big deal. Weaver is selling his twenty-ton trailer for five thousand dollars and I would like to purchase that before somebody else does.
Need a motion?
Oh, yeah, you need a motion.
So both. Motion by Ken.
Second.
Second by Tony. It's rated, it's called a twenty thousand.
It's a twenty-one ton, actually, so.
Twenty-one ton.
Tag along.
Tag along.
And it is a cam, I think it's a cam, no, Rogers, it's a Rogers trailer.
Any discussion? Ten minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? So carry five zero zero.
The next thing is the tractor with mid-mount boom mower. I would like to purchase the Case IH Maxim one fifteen CVX tractor. That would be equipped with a diamond twenty-foot boom, mid-mount boom with a rear cradle and it'll have a fifty-inch mowing deck on it. It'd be a rotary, rotary head with three blades. If we didn't have so much brush, we could probably purchase a flail, but talking with other towns, like, that have, me and Timmy went over to Wilmington and Dover and they, they've done a lot of work with their tractor because they've had it for the last five years and they said that their next head would be a flail because they've taken care of the brush problems, so. And I feel this rotary head's what we need for now.
For the tractor?
Yeah, and the head, and this arm is actually set up so you can change the heads too, so if we wanted to buy a flail mower or, there's another, I can't remember the name of it, I got it in here, but there's another mower head too that you could purchase, there's a couple of different attachments, but that arm is set up for it too. And then this tractor's got the CVT transmission, so we're looking at more longevity with this tractor as well.
Tom, move.
Okay. And the price?
The price of this machine, total package with the mower, is a hundred and seventy-four thousand one hundred and sixty.
Of which we have a hundred and ten.
Yeah, we've already had the loan for a hundred and ten thousand from the state, the balance is sitting in the Equipment Reserve Fund and the payments for the loan were approved by the voters at town meeting for five years, so this is actually all paid for and wrapped up already.
Second.
Okay. Did you make that, Ken?
Yeah, he did.
Motion by Ken, second by Tony. For Case IH one fifteen CVX with a diamond mower for a total of a hundred and seventy-four thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Aye. Did I hear an aye from you?
Yeah.
Okay, aye. Aye. All those opposed? So carry five zero zero.
Just as a side, it wasn't mentioned, all those were the low bids too.
Yeah. That's a mowing head right there.
What's that third mower head for?
The third blade?
Yeah, the third mower head. That was more for like, trees?
Trees, yeah. It's in that packet.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a forestry head.
Yeah, no, I knew, I knew that they had never, that was why I wanted like the diamond.
If you flip towards the front, the first page is the whole setup. Keep going, right there. It's just how it's done here.
Was that on the closed cab?
Yeah.
Your fingers?
Yeah, the tractor that we're looking at is, that's a tad bigger, but similar design.
Does the CVT make it easier?
I already know where to turn the clutch.
Yeah.
Okay.
It has a clutch, but-
I show the door.
There's no shifting. You-
What's the advantage of that over hydrostatic?
It pretty much is a hydrostatic.
That's what I was going to say.
To explain it easier.
Continues here.
Yeah. So, you know, talking with Dave Hosley, who used to do all of our mowing, and he said that he burnt up so many different power shifts that if we want to keep the tractor for a while, you're going to want to go with the CVT. It's just the stop and go around telephone poles, signs, mailboxes, traffic, you know, whatever with the CVT. When you stop, you don't even need to touch the clutch or anything. You can just stop the tractor and then take, take off. There's no shifting needed. That rental one that we have, that one-
It's a twin clutch, I think. Twin clutch system on that?
Yeah, that was a very cheap transmission is the one we're renting. It's not using-
You said at the end of the day, you took your toll on the operator.
You did, yeah. This has a swivel seat and it's the, the window on the case, this whole side is completely open, where the John gear has a center post, so you're constantly looking at that post. And then the case has a seat that turns, so you turn your seat. Yeah, it's, it's a really nice setup.
Cage in front of the windows there?
It's a shattered proof window and Diamond installs that and they put it in their package. It looks like all of them do it, but, and then the tractor is specked with a tire that's more like what's on the grader, not these ag tires, because ag tires are not very friendly to a freshly graded road. So the tires were a little bit more money, but it's worth it.
Okay.
They should note, too, that the tracks on that excavator-
Oh, yeah.
Are a combination of steel and rubber, where most of those mini excavators have got just a straight rubber track-
Okay.
Which they tend to, they're easy, they tear up easier.
Okay.
These are a lot more, a lot ruggerter and going to have a lot more longevity to them.
Yeah, they're a little bit noisier to run, but it'd be good for us.
Yeah.
Instead of replacing the whole rubber track, you're just, you're replacing that rubber pad. And then if you didn't like the pads, you could take them off and run straight to steel, too.
Easier loading on the truck, trailers, too.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so approved the road, the road project, bought an excavator and bought a mower. Congratulations, John.
Citizens of Shakespeare will applaud us.
Yes. He's never been prepared to home with a lot of equipment. He wants to work all night. Got lights and all that stuff, too, you know.
Yes, he do.
Perfect.
Yeah. I guess Dave and I were kind of talking, as far as I'm concerned, you're approved for overtime when the moment, when the government comes.
Okay, yeah.
Did he make it around?
Yeah, every road, the powder roads.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah.
But only one pass in some cases?
Some roads were only one pass, which isn't really beneficial. Yeah, so.
Yeah, that's why we were talking, when it comes back, Saturdays, Sundays, 12-hour days, whatever it takes.
Some towns, I was talking to the rental manager and he said that some towns run at three shifts.
Yeah, because you got to maximize-
You take three, eight-hour shifts.
Wow.
He said, oh, yeah.
During the night, nighttime shift.
Don't know about mowing at night, but.
I don't know. I mean, up north in Vermont, where there's no houses or anything, you probably could get away with it.
Yeah, but no, none of, no, God, no.
You could mow till eight o'clock at night. I can see that, but.
So, so do we pay by the hour or by the day?
With the machine?
Yes.
Week.
Unlimited hours?
Unlimited hours. That's why-
Yeah, so you want to crank as many hours out of it as you can.
Yeah.
Sure.
But I could see running a normal 10, 12-hour day, maybe a half a day Saturday, you know, or something.
Okay, well, if anybody wants overtime-
Yeah, it's what to-
Okay, it's approved.
Perfect.
All right? Okay.
That's all I have.
Mike, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Done a good job.
Thank you.
So, reviewed action items?
Can't really, anybody?
I'll take, I mean, we took a lot of action, my own-
Yeah, but there's nothing to follow up on. Yeah, okay, we'll just order what we just all approved. Always gives me heartburn spending money on that.
Okay, I would like to, is there any other business before, concerns or anything? We have to go into executive session for personnel issues. And there probably will be some action taken when we get back, okay? So I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So move.
Move by Ken, second by Joe. You got the time, Joe? 7:25, 7:25. All those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. And I think we- Sludborne is back in open session. Time is?
8:03.
8:03. We're back in open session. Would, take them one at a time?
Yeah, one at a time would be best.
Would entertain a motion that Tim Gully be appointed DPW assistant?
Foreman, assistant foreman.
Assistant foreman.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ken, second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried, 5-0-0. Entertain a motion that Michelle Boardman, better known as Shelley-
Better known as Shelley.
Be appointed the-
Transfer station supervisor.
Transfer sta, I was going to say, transfer station supervisor.
So move.
Move by Ken.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried, 5-0-0. And Greg Stradon-
Squires.
Or Greg Squires.
Squires.
He has not been an employee of ours. He's been working for TAM all this time, has applied for a job as-
Transfer, transfer station attendant.
Transfer station attendant.
So move.
Move by Ken.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried, 5-0-0.
And the next one, if I could phrase this correctly, because we want to offer employment to Nicholas Spur as a DPW crewman. I'd like the board to approve his hiring if he accepts the offer. And I'm asking for prior approval so that we can have him at work before our next select board meeting, because we're, we're down and we could use the man. So if he, if he accepts the offer, then we can move forward and hire him.
Okay.
So move.
So, second.
Motion by Tony, second by Ken. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, 5-0-0. Any other business, any other business come before the board?
Nope.
Motion to adjourn.
By Ken.
Second.
Second by Tony. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.